Motion to support, bring this to the floor.
So who?
Support. Mike, any discussion on this?
There's, this is just a sign here, there's nothing monetary exchange of hands on this grant, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I realize the charter hasn't been changed, it's still the charter. Yeah, I can move on to certain corpses in City Hall upstairs, too. You know, just like I said in the last week, just so we have some kind of notice rather than on the Thursday or Friday before the meeting that he's going to show up at, that they're going to show up at, you know, so what's going on, that's what we need. If there is something that we need to have a discussion on, we can. And I realize this is just a formality on this. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Gary?
No, I haven't.
Tom?
Um, this is the same as what Mike said, and we've discussed it at some of the other meetings where we've had legal counsel come in for those meetings. I'm glad to have you here to keep us on the straight track so we don't very violate the Open Meetings Act. What we do need, I need as a councilperson, to know what's going on and not wait till we get to the meeting to have it described to us. But other than that, no, I think it's better to have somebody named like this than it is just to not have somebody listed.
Dennis?
Uh, yeah. I guess, I got a question for you, Mr. Jones. Where did this come from? I mean, we've operated without, correct?
I've had a couple emails from a couple people that have wondered what authority Barnum has to act as legal counsel for the city.
Okay.
And when we just talked to Mr. Cracker, he said some cities have a name person, some of them don't. But I guess I can answer somebody when they send me an email and say, what gives them the authorization to speak for the city because they're our legal counsel?
Okay. So, I mean, I just wondered because we have, it's not something we've obviously had in the past, so I didn't know what, why we were...
He's been the legal counsel? No, I don't. On Meg could answer better than I can, but for a long time, but...
Oh, and that question, I was just wondering where it originated from, because I guess...
Because I've had people in emails asking, what gives them the authority to be the legal counsel? And this does not.
As Tom said, this was brought up through him asking and just following through, had a resolution to put it on the records. So, no further discussion. Call for vote.
Mr. Gunderson?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Schei?
Yes.
Mr. Lalo?
Yes.
Item B under unfinished business, pass. Five oh. New business, public comments. Any public comment on non-agenda items? Please step to the podium, state your name and address if you would, for the records, please. We have two minutes.
You're all well aware that I've applied for the ZBA. Just like to let you know that I am willing to take any training that would be required. So...
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, Kirkabesa, 879 story wrote. I just wanted to do a quick follow-up in regards to the mayor's comment at the last meeting at the end of not understanding how the ZBA got turned around, so I just wanted a quick reflect upon that for clarification. On your May 20th meeting, there was a resolution by the city manager who said that she was asked to help find a solution to end conflicts with the ZBA, which has been one member short of its required five members for more than a year, with only one candidate coming forward to fill that position. Well, and according to Maggie, the candidate was disqualified because he already sat on the planning commission's board. I believe that was Catherine Henry that was applied for that position, and we already had Shelley Gladie that was on the board, so I guess that's where the conflict came from. Part of the problem is, is that we were only one member short, and Mr. Benson wasn't alternate at the time and never was contacted to fill that position. So we kind of rushed and disbanded the ZBA without reaching out to our alternate that could have filled that position. And, Mr. Mayor, you had said that that change was necessary because oftentimes it was a lack of forum, but again, that person was not contacted. And of course, we already know the boards was never contacted for it to be dissolved. It was also stated that if the people were there, that the board would be reinstalled, and that was by the city manager. She made that statement, and this was in the Daily News on May 22nd. So I just want to make sure that, I mean, these are the facts of why the ZBA was disbanded without reaching out to our alternate, or even after this disbanding of the ZBA, there was multiple applications that came in. I believe Benita Steele put in an application, and I know Mr. Henry had put in his application. And so, we had the applicants shortly thereafter. I definitely couldn't understand getting into the situation with the new businesses and having to deal with those, but again, we keep going back to qualified people when we already had board members, Michelle Cooper, Shelley Gladie, Robert Thompson, and of course, you, Mr. Mayor, who was already on the board. We just got to contacted the alternate to fill that position, which is a shame, because there was a citizen that was already here ready to go to work. So, I do agree with Mr. Knowlton that it is an important board, but we already have the people there to put the board back in place. They're already doing the job. So, I would urge that the council could reinstate these people, and of course, I know we have even more applicants than that since I believe Mr. McClair has applied, and there was one other one.
One senior.
The one.
One senior.
Yeah, Mr. Blunt Senior has also applied, and I believe they're all well-qualified people, and their business works in the community. So I wanted to clarify how that had happened, so that the public's aware, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Greg. Any other citizen comment? Citizen public comment? Next?
Um, yes. I have a couple of things. First, right now, we're working internally to start inventorying all of our surplus. We are putting all of that information together, Kevin is. We are looking at my bid, in which to make it available to the general public, their percent as far as what they take is 2%, which is well below anything else that we've experienced. That is a list that we have to bring to council to authorize that we are able to dispose of or to release. In addition to that, with the equipment purchases that were authorized, we've looked at AIS, who is providing us the backhoe, relative to the existing backhoe that's caught on fire. It's died, I think, three times since the fire. I believe three times. And AIS is willing to give us a trade-in of $12,000, so that what the purchase price was, which was $1.16, would be reduced. And so, at the next council meeting, that's going to be on the agenda relative to authorizing that we allow this trade-in for the $12,000. Ernie Omsley believes that if we were able to get $10,000 at bid, we would be really lucky, but then you take 2% of that, which would then reduce it. So frankly, it, in my opinion, this is a great opportunity, because it does reduce our capital outlay cost for the new backhoe, and we are able to dispose of this piece of equipment and get more for it than what Ernie anticipated we would be able to at a bidding process. So, those are really, I think, the two issues that I wanted to bring forward. So, you'll be having, it'll be a large list of things, because every department is going through. Additionally, none of the city staff, or council, or family members can claim anything, but they will, anybody will have the right through the my bid to bid. It's an online auction process. So if there is something that they're interested in, that's the legal manner on which to go through it, and then we don't have to worry about any type of impropriety or nepotism simply because it's an outside firm that handles that situation on our behalf. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, we'll move into council comments. I don't like to take Tom, why don't you go?
Just like to thank everybody for being here tonight and gleaning our winter weather we finally got. Just remember, at least we're one month down from the winter. I'd like to thank the city crews that finally had to work a lot of extra time to get snow falling and the work that was done with the auditing staff, with the, working with the auditors and getting that done, and having good comments from the auditors, so it looks like they're doing a pretty good job. I guess that's all.
Thank you.
Yeah. I wanted to thank Benita Steele. I meant to do it the last few days for film in our council meetings. It's been a real hit in our community. You know, Stan is looking at doing it, their city. Apparently they have the resources and manpower to do that, but thank you for your time. It's been a real pleasure. I think you've really enjoyed it. I also want the community to know that I'm working for you, okay? I may need some help, but I'm working for you.
Thank you. Mike?
I would like to thank all of the people that applied for the ZBA. It's not one of the best positions the city has, so thank you very much. I also like to thank everybody for showing up.
That's it? Thank you. Chair.
I had the opportunity to walk in the mall last week. I introduced myself to the new retaining owners, and it was nice to see the both hair salons busy as they were. And just seeing the mall, it's coming alive. And now we have the horses' mouths coming in, and finally that's going to be done here. So I'd like to congratulate John Troy for getting that done. It's been a process for them, but I'm looking forward to that. So the new business is coming in, it's pretty exciting. I want to thank, also, I want to recognize Joe Firestein for his work he did with Wesco and moving that forward as well, and also with his help in giving us a favorable, his audit report. Joe, I think you were very instrumental in that by going to the back's office every Monday and questioning where the money was going to, and I appreciate your help with that, Joe. I want to thank Mike Verdonne during the holidays. He sponsored the Chamber After Hours, Chamber of Commerce. Also, Benita Steele and Lee Mark for supplying the beverages. I appreciate that very much. I also had the opportunity, Mike and I, to step on your toes. I visited the meeting over at the Housing Commission, and I wasn't stepping on your toes, but I don't need to, Mike bets. But what a great thing is going on over there. They have a calendar that just got put out off, you've seen it, and kids were, I think the kids throughout the community that utilize, live in those communities like that, and just hearing some of the kids speak of what home means to them. And it doesn't have to be a castle, they're just happy to walk in the door, they're having a hunk of themselves, and it really touched my heart. So I really appreciate what I like, and with you being on the liaison, and if you have an opportunity to look at the calendar over there, head over there and just take a look at the kids that talk about what home means to them pictures, and it really will touch your heart, and it just makes you more thankful for what we have. So, I appreciate what they do over there. That's all I have.
Thank you. January 28th at 6:00 PM, out at the Orchard View, I believe, its administration office, there will be, the DEQ will be there to answer questions about the electrolysis property. That's when the meeting is set up for.
What's the date?
The 28th of January, 6:00 PM. They will be putting an ad in the paper, they will be noticing the city. I would like to thank Becky for the audit report, and all those that are intertwined with that, very favorable for the city. I'd like to thank Wesco for keeping their business within the community, and I'm sure they'll be able to work out any differences right now with MDOT, and they will be able to move forward with this project. I know it hasn't been extremely cold or anything, but I was reminded that possibly some of the water lines that froze last year that were really extremely shallow, or maybe we consider calling those people?
We're mailing out a notice to them tomorrow.
Okay.
Relative to this and that, those that we identified that froze last year, they can start doing the two-a-click screen, and we will discount, we'll monitor that with the differences in the discount according to that.
Thank you. And also, on December 23rd, we lost John Geisert. He was a longtime member of this community. He had three Purple Hearts. He died at the age of 89. He was in 45th Infantry Division, Silver Star, Bronze Star, Good Conduct, Medal of Combat Infantry Badge. He was known as many as Johnny Thunderbird. He was a machine gunner, and a member of the American Legion for over 60 years, that was counsel of Ionia County, and it goes on and on. He was a member of the city council from 1969 to 1974, which he was also the mayor through that tenure. So, I would like to just send condolences to the family, and as a reminder of another one of our World War II veterans that we have lost, at least the, they were able to see what happened out here with the wall, and how it all came together before they did pass. So, with that, that's all I have. Next, we'll move into the work session, review the ZBA appointment process, and consider applicants. Mike?
Yes. At the last meeting, there were several comments, and I went through the minutes to look at those. Councilmember Schei suggested that the ZBAV are hybrid, in the sense of looking at the appointment of members, letting them sit and observe this body that's currently acting that capacity, attend the trainings, and then turn it over to them upon completion of that. The problem with that is, once appointment goes into place, they would then act in the capacity of ZBA, so they couldn't sit. It could be a, I don't even know if a tentative appointment would be applicable. That's something that I would have to get a legal opinion on, and I haven't, as not to incur the cost until we have the discussion determining what actions we're going to take. But once an appointment occurs, the ZBA is duly authorized and recognized and to take with all the powers that are vested with the authority of appeals. Mayor Gunderson's stated training was available in March for those that would be serving on ZBA, and that council should work through determining appointments in the process in a work session in the forum. Councilmember Jones stated that the three previous ZBA members be contacted to fill out an application if they are willing, and Corrine did in fact contact all of those and ask for responses by December 29th. She did not receive any, with the exception of, we did receive one which you have in front of you, which was received on the 6th, was received today, so that is before you. It was not good in your packets because it wasn't available at that time. Additionally, Jones stated that the appointment does not have to occur at this meeting, and that council could see who the applicants were, and if they need other camp applicants. Councilmember Lalo asked if the city manager and Gary Knowlton could prepare questions for the applicants to answer on stated council, leave the questions, and then they can review applications, then they could add to those questions, that the applications could be reviewed before they come into the meeting. Such a motion was made by Jones, supported by Schei, to have a work session at tonight's meeting. Attached to your packets are applicants to date when this was produced. Therefore, further, the Planning Commission would make a recommendation of one of their members to sit on the ZBA, and counter their point based upon that. And at the last Planning Commission meeting, we did have a very lengthy conversation. Corrine did review the minutes where it was stated that an application from a Planning Commission member would not have to be filled out because they already sit in that capacity, but it was determined that at the next Planning Commission meeting, that board would make a recommendation to council for who would sit on the ZBA representing them. Gary Knowlton did indicate that he would in fact help prepare questions if council still request it. I think he solidified that tonight. But at the time that this motion relative to the workshop was approved, that wasn't part of the request that any questions be established at that point. So there wasn't moving forward by either Chairman Knowlton or myself. It's staff's recommendation that council review the applications to date, and basically establish how an appointment process will occur, i.e. whether there'd be interviews, would they answer a set of questions to be submitted, would mandatory training prior to be seated be required? And then, once the decisions and determinations are made on how to appoint that board, then, and those events solidify, then, that process take place. And again, these are simply recommendations for myself, as well as discussions with some of the staff members, as well as Chairman Knowlton, and based upon the dialogue that was exchanged in the comments at the last meeting. So with that, you know, now is your opportunity to start having that dialogue with the work session, relative to how you want to proceed.
Okay, so we need a process if we're going to handle this with?
Well, that's for council to determine.
No, we don't have that.
Okay.
What do you got?
Anything? Just that we need to, I guess, the board member or council members need to review the applications. I don't know if we, I don't know how the councils in the past have done it, whether they have applicants come in for a formal interview at the council meeting, or how it normally proceeds. I'm not sure what questions, other than just asking if they're going to be fair and understand the rules of the zoning board and what their job is to do. Although we can force them to take classes, but recommend that the cities will pick up the tab for it. I would hope in the next 30 days, we can have the ZBA's receeded. I don't know if it'll happen yet this month, but maybe by the first, at their first February council meeting, make a decision on those appointments. And I guess you and Meg have said, there's nothing at this point, unless something comes up in emergency, for the ZBA to have to consider. There should be plenty of time if they take positions after the first meeting in February. The classes are in March, so there should be no, enough window there. Shelley Glenn has experience on that. I'm not sure if the other two people were involved with the previous ZBA. At this point, they haven't expressed an interest, but maybe they will. But at this point, I count up six, six applicants, the ones that we have presented tonight with their application, is Dan Blunt Senior, Henry, John McClure, Benita Steele, Michelle Cooper, is that Michelle? Shelley, Shelley Cooper, Michelle Cooper, and Shelley Gladie have all expressed an interest. So at this point, we have six candidates, and that's how many member board? Five?
It's five with two alternates.
Five with two alternates, so it looks like we're, you know, as long as everybody can incur with the application, that's the people that have applied for it. We've got the five and the one alternate, at least already, and pick up one more alternate along the line. I guess that's what I'm, I would foresee as the timeline.
Yeah, we have six applicants, one from the Planning Commission that expressed interest, who has experience already on the ZBA. We, so we had, like I said, we have six applicants, and the ordinance allows one of us to fill in a position, so that would be seven. That's five board members and the two alternates. So I guess, I'm not sure why we have to extend this out to February, why we can't appoint this board and get it done with here right now. We started this November 18th, and like I said, we have, in my opinion, qualified applicants. I don't know what more qualified you need than an attorney, a former council member, former ZBA member. I don't know what else we're looking for. So I don't know why we're not appointing that people right now and being done with it, particularly when there's nothing on the horizon, so they have that opportunity to prepare themselves to sit as a ZBA member. So I guess that's my thought on that.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, we do have people that are qualified here. We've got ones that have been on the...
We've got ones that have been on the board before and stuff. And the city council, we certainly need one more alternate because the city council, are they voting or not, are they? Well, they are, but then they can't vote out of the city council, right?
Well, it would be rejected at the council level to go to Z B A. And whatever the vote was that they did at the council would then be their vote at a Z B A. It's the same with the planning commission, if the planning commission rejects something and it's appealed, that planning commissioner, the vote that they voted at the planning commission level is the vote that is recorded at Z B A.
Yeah, we've got qualified people, and I'm sure that there's probably some online things they can look at. You've got the booklet that you gave us that you can give them and stuff. I believe we can see them fairly fast. And like you say, there's nothing going on anyway, so I guess, one way or the other, because of that, it doesn't really matter when we get to see them. But, you know, we need to get it done, not let it drag out.
Thank you, Mike. Jerry?
Yeah, nobody's questioning qualifications. As you know, like that, this is a, you know, over thirty-three page handbook. And there's a lot to go through, I mean, you know, I know you look at it, I did, and there's quite a lot to take in. Just to appoint somebody, I'm not sure if that's the right way to go, considering the legal ramifications that go with this board. This board is one of the boards that can be sued unfortunately. And I don't know if that's just putting them on as the right answer here, considering what's in this handbook and there's a lot to deal with. But nobody's questioning qualifications by no means. I guess one concerns I have is, is I just want to make sure that everybody is going to be working with our city manager too. And be able to call her up and maybe get some guidance as well during this period. And that the applicants will be able to call her and ask her for any questions, because I'm sure you're a little more seasoned than this than most people are, Meg. And I would hope they would do that. But I really want to know who's going to be able to work with you as well, and so, that, those are my concerns with it, so.
Thank you, Jerry. I do feel that we need some questions that need to be put together for the applicants. As far as time frame wise, next meeting is the twentieth. If Gary and Meg had time to work together on some of those questions, it doesn't necessarily have to be a review process, they could be filled out. And resubmitted back to the city. But those questions, I believe, should come to us at the last, or at the next meeting for review. I believe Tom, I believe Gary mentioned that one time, and I believe Jerry showed an interest in that. So, I do have concerns because of the liability, going back to the city. But we'll work through that aspect of it as far as questions and answers go. Meg, can you and Gary get together and do something like that, is that, you know, something that could be done?
I don't see an issue with that, especially with this conference tonight. And we're scheduled to meet next week to put together the planning commission agenda anyway. So, we can tackle that at the same time. And then that way, they would come to you at the next council meeting.
And then that way, we'd have those questions. So, by the third, Tom, by you wanting to move this ahead and we could make decisions on it then?
I'm comfortable February third, if we make a decision on the applicants at that meeting.
Okay.
Whether we have them in for, you know, a question answered here, or if they submit the answers to the questions we approve on the twentieth.
Would you, which would you prefer? Would you prefer interviews or?
I have no problem with either, either format, whether, I guess a candidate would be comfortable with it.
Is it possible we can see, we'll see those questions before?
Yeah, sure. What I'll do is make sure that they are included in the next council packet that goes out now. Whether or not you want them part of the agenda, as far as approving those or adding to those, that's up to you. You just need to give me that directive, once the work session is done, for a motion, if you want those as an agenda item for reviewing, consideration, and possibly addition or exemptions.
This handbook is online, I saw it.
Yeah, you can go over it.
Right, so, this, yes, this is online too as well. It gives some idea that you're looking into it, or you're reading it yourself. But it's available online.
I got a few questions. I guess I don't know why we need questions if we've all kind of just admitted that these are qualified candidates. So, why do we need to put them through those records? The other thing I got is, when, you know, we keep talking about this board being a liability to the city and can be sued. It was, has there been any litigation brought forward against that board in recent past? So, we haven't had an issue within the past?
No.
So, we've admitted that these guys, people are qualified candidates. We continue to drag this process out, I'm not sure why we're continuing that and forcing them to answer these questions. I'm not, I guess I'm not.
Any comments for Dennis?
No, but it would be nice to have some questions, just to see if they're... And I don't think they do, okay? Thoughts about this or something like that, you know, I don't, I don't believe there's anything that any of these people would have that would throw up any red flags, so.
No, I just think we want the board back, people want the board.
But like you said, you know, we have nothing pending, there ain't things, so, you know, it waits till February third, and this is kind of going to kill us.
No, you know, and I hate to poke on this, but right now, it just, unfortunately, the way things are going on right now is that a lot of people refuse to communicate back and forth with the city manager. And that is, I guess, one of my main concerns is, you know, it's no secret how some people feel about Maggie, about our city manager. And I just want to make sure that the qualified applicants are, at least be open to contacting Maggie if they have any questions. And, or some type of look for guidance if they have any questions. And that would be my biggest concern is, I just want to make sure that they know that Maggie has an open door policy. And they can contact her anytime that they have any questions regarding the Z B A., anytime down the road. And that's my biggest concern.
So, we have to have them fill out paperwork to determine that or answer that or?
Well, I mean, would you like to question them individually right now? I mean.
No, no, I'm going to be there.
Well, I don't either. I have a question answered for you.
Okay, so, if we do, if we do the questions, if you and Gary get together, do the questions, get them to us for the meeting on the twentieth. We can review them, add to them, if we come up with our own ideas. And then, once we get those questions in place, between the meeting on the twentieth and the third of February. Have the applicants fill out, leave those questions. And get those returned, so that on the third, we would be able to do the interviews like Tom said.
Need to appoint them, if that's the priority.
And if I could, this would also provide an opportunity that between now and the twentieth, if someone else that hasn't submitted a formal application was interested, that they would then be able to do so.
Then I'd also, along with sending the applicants the questions, although I know the manual is online, I think we need to send that manual with them so they can review it. And, you know, they, they see what the responsibilities are for that position.
Can the city print these off for them and can they put these up at C Hall?
I'd rather, if we're going to send out the questions to the candidates, I'd rather send it to them. That way, we know they get a copy of it.
Do we have to interview the candidates or do we just answer the questions?
Yeah, they can do it either, to me, whichever way they want to do it, which is convenient for them.
So, I said that might be inconvenient for some of them.
Yeah, that's what I mean, my intent was either they could answer the questions, or they could be on February third to be interviewed or answer the questions.
Corinne, can you read that back and what we've got set up?
Meg and Jerry are going to prepare the questions. They will be included in your council packet for January twentieth, for you to review and add or subtract. Candidates, if there are any others, they will have until that date, I would think, to submit their applications. At that point then, I would send each candidate a list of questions and a hard copy of the manual for them to review. On February third, they could have either turned in their questions or appear at council to answer the questions or talk with council in an interview process. Is there anything else that I missed?
My question would be at the interview process, that rather than have them talk to us, I guess, what my thought was is if they would be answering those questions directly to us versus talking to us. Correct, Tom?
Yeah, basically.
Okay, that's what I'm sorry.
He was answering questions in person.
He was mayor, could ask the question and they could respond to it.
Yeah, we can, or have Corinne ask them, and that way, we can all pay attention to what's being said.
If we feel they're qualified, at that point, we could, you know, appoint them that night, and I'll give, just any time you get it. Advocate for reserve spaces. If anybody can attend, you know, give them dates.
Any other comments, put the time on it? Are you going to ask for a motion to adjourn?
So.
Support? Anywhere anyone?